All right, I think we've reached the appointed hour. So, welcome everyone to this work session of the Town Council. South Kingstown Town Council, I should say. It's Wednesday, February 26, 2020. First order of business is the Pledge to the Flag. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on the agenda, why we're all gathered here tonight, is a discussion regarding the Town Radio System Project with representatives of the Union Fire District, Kingston Fire District, and other public safety personnel. I think maybe first thing to do is just go around the table and introduce ourselves. I guess I'll start. I'm Abel Collins, the President of the South Kingstown Town Council.
Bryant Decruze, Vice President of the Town Council.
Deborah Kelso, Town Council.
We implore the award of peace.
Mark Behrington, award of peace.
It's all finance.
Rob Zanetsky, Town Manager.
Lance Whaley, Fire Arm Superintendent.
Captain Mark Healy, South Kingstown Police.
Lieutenant McLeod, Division of Fire District.
Jim Mathon, Member of Board of One, Union Fire District.
Andy Bovay, Member of Board of One, Junior Fire District.
Chief Steve Pence, Union Fire District.
Rory Mackenzie, Town Council.
Joe Veely, Town Council.
All right, thank you, folks. Rob, do you want to sort of set the stage?
That's great. Thank you very much. This is a very technical area. We're going to be talking about a whole bunch of stuff tonight, maybe not too deep in the weeds, but we are going to be talking about systems that are complex and they involve quite a bit of science. I'm not going to try to even pretend to understand all of the science here, but I do have developed a pretty good sense of the big themes, and I'm going to give us all sort of an overview of radio technology so that we've at least got a grounding for the conversation as we go forward. So, this really all starts with a guy named Heinrich Hertz. Heinrich Hertz was a German physicist in the 1800s who discovered electromagnetic waves. He was the first person to prove the existence of electromagnetic waves. He's the guy we call kilohertz and megahertz and gigahertz after. One of the things that we're talking about tonight is whether we should be doing a 400 megahertz or an 800 megahertz system. All that really is about is the length of the wave and the frequency of the waves that are transmitted by the radio equipment and received by the radio equipment we're talking about. Now, radio waves are just part of the electromagnetic spectrum. This is kind of important for you to know just because they're not artificial. Radio waves and these waves in general in the electromagnetic spectrum exist in nature, and they have characteristics because of their nature, because of the way they've been sort of made in the world. The characteristics of waves impact how they behave in the built environment, how they behave in the natural environment. It's curious. Radio frequencies tend to be the lower end, light frequencies tend to be the higher end, at least of what we're talking about here and now. The waves that are along the electromagnetic wave, some are absolutely tiny, minuscule size, some are as large as the universe, just huge waves. There's just this vast spectrum of waves. We're talking about the radio band, and the spectrum for radio is really understood as very low frequency, VLF, low frequency, medium frequency, high frequency, very high frequency, ultra-high frequency, super-high frequency, and extreme-high frequency. Beyond that, we start getting into light waves. The systems that we're contemplating purchasing are both in the UHF bands. Where 400 megahertz and 800 megahertz are both UHF frequencies. Our public works folks, the highway folks, are currently operating a radio system in the VHF band, just as a point of reference. The further you get along the spectrum, VHF being very high, ultra-high being more frequent waves, the wave occurrences, the number of hertz, is greater as you move down the spectrum. This is important because, again, the length of the waves impacts how they behave with other matter, other materials. Very, very long waves can penetrate the earth. Very long waves can penetrate rock. Very short waves tend not to penetrate steel, they tend not to penetrate rock, they tend not to penetrate dense materials. That's an important characteristic of waves and of radio waves in particular. Radio waves, and all waves for that matter, generally travel in a straight line. If you've got line of sight, that is wherever the transmitter is can be seen, you're going to get a good radio signal, so long as the transmission of the power of that transmitter is sufficient to keep the signal going so that the background noise doesn't interfere. Radio waves, in theory, go on forever, and radio waves in a vacuum travel at the speed of light. In the real world, they don't. In the real world, they die off because background noise just makes them indistinguishable from the rest of the stuff. This line-of-sight problem is a big challenge when developing a communication network like the one that we're contemplating. You can't go through hills, you can't go through some buildings, you can't go through some forests, some trees just block the radio waves. If we're talking about a place that has absolutely no obstructions, we still have another problem, and that is the curvature of the earth, because waves travel in a straight line, is itself a problem. Two six-foot-tall men with handheld radios on a perfectly barren surface can only be 2.9 miles away from each other because of the curvature of the earth. Beyond that, that signal is not high enough to overcome the problem of the earth's curvature. Our problem in South Kingstown is not hills, it's not topography generally, we're a pretty flat jurisdiction. In South Kingstown, our problem is typically trees and forests and buildings. I'm going to pause here for a second and just point out that that linear transmission characteristic is important, it's not the only important characteristic, the quality of the signal also, particularly when dealing with artificial radio waves, the power of the signal also is very important. If you don't have enough power, the signal doesn't get out of the transmitter at all. If you don't have enough power to go as far as you want, your signal's going to die off, it's going to become ambient with the rest of the noise in the atmosphere pretty quickly. Receiver characteristics that also matter are the compatibility of the frequency, obviously, an 800 ra-- well, not every, obviously, I'll put it this way. An AM radio does not pick up FM radio signals. Similarly, a VHF radio cannot pick up UFH signals. A 400-megahertz radio receiver cannot pick up what's transmitted by an 800-megahertz transmitter. Obviously, the components have to be working in the radio, that is a problem for us right now, our radios are reaching the end of their life, we've had many of our 800-megahertz radios for 10 years, and the components are beginning to fail. Power has to be sufficient at the receiver end, you have to be within the signal range, and you have to, this is the most important thing, not be behind an impenetrable barrier. Now, what's an impenetrable barrier depends on the characteristics of the signal being transmitted, the characteristics of the wave, the strength of the wave, the length of the wave, et cetera. Trees actually are a major problem. We've had trouble in the southwest corner of town because the 800 signals get scattered by pine needles, just the configuration of the pine tree, that matter configuration is enough to disrupt the 800-megahertz signals that are being transmitted in that direction. In South Kingstown, one of our biggest problems is buildings. This is the recent Cube Smart building, or the Cube Smart building recently built out on Old Tower Hill Road. We have found, through testing actually, that the 400-megahertz signals, again, longer and just the characteristics, I don't want to get into sort of guessing at why, but the characteristics of those signals are such that they penetrate the building. The 800-megahertz signals don't, whether they're bouncing off the steel concrete construction or are being absorbed by the concrete, I can't tell you, but the signals are not penetrating that building. We've got that problem with 800-megahertz transmitters and the signals sent by those transmitters in other buildings, including the Mattoonik Elementary School, including the Curtis Corner Elementary School, parts, particularly the security vestibule that just was constructed at South Kingstown High School, and even the police department. We've got a repeater in the police department, an amplifier, if you will, to make sure that we can get the signal to handheld radios in the police department, but without that repeater, we can't get 800-megahertz signals transmitted outside of the building on the inside of the building. We also have dead zones with our current 800-megahertz system. This is not due to the penetrability problem, this problem is because the transmitters can't see these spots. Six-foot man holding a handheld radio does not have line of sight to any transmitter in these locations, and it's a significant problem for folks responding to these locations. Now, I mentioned repeaters, there are ways to augment that network. If we have radio towers scattered around town, you can augment your signal through a repeater, it's essentially an amplifier. You have to do that either mobily, in a car, or you have to have a repeater in the building or near the building to amplify that signal. They're expensive, it's a very difficult thing to have an amplifier in every police car. They're very common in the fire service, they're not as common in the police service. I'll let the captain comment on that at some point, we'll come back to him in just a second. The other piece that's important to know is that there are patches, there are ways to go from one band to another. Typically, it's software involved, but you are receiving a 400-megahertz signal, you turn it into an 800-megahertz signal, and you transmit it back out so that the 800-megahertz receivers can receive it. Patches are common, and they're in fact, we'll see in a couple of slides, one of the preferred ways for dealing with interoperability. So, the system that we've contemplated as we move toward a new radio network would consist of five towers, these five towers where the arrows are indicating them. These five towers produce signal that is receivable in buildings and on the ground, everywhere where it's green. They produce signal that is receivable outdoors where it's yellow. We may have difficulty using radios in buildings where it's still yellow. And then the purple area becomes mobile coverage, which is not handheld radios, but the radios in the cars that are more powerful, they have more, more wattage, exactly. This network has been laid out for rough estimate purposes. One of the things that we've heard recently is, this may not be the right network, and that may be correct. This is a network that was laid out by a consultant that we hired named Federal, what is it, Federal Engineering, with the idea that we would go to the marketplace and say, we know we can get green coverage if we do this. However, if a contractor, a vendor, has a better idea and can produce better coverage, eliminate that yellow and the little blob of purple over in the northwest corner, without busting the bank, we're open to that, and we will put a request for proposals out on the street that says, we know we can get to green here, but if you've got a better idea, let us know. It's also conceivable that investigation by a vendor says, you think you can get this coverage using these sites, but we've found an impediment that doesn't allow you to use all of these sites, so here's our solution, here's a different way to do it because we don't think you can use, let's say, Motucket, for whatever reason. This is an estimate that was designed to get us to a guess at what a system was going to cost. Do we have enough towers as-is? Well, we may, it looks like we do. Are we going to have to put in new shelters? Well, we know about the shelters for the equipment at these locations, so we relied on what we've got, but we recognize that this may not be the network that a vendor, when we go out for our proposals, ultimately settles on. It's important to know that this is not our final design, this is just an estimation tool that we use to figure out what we should be budgeting for as we go out to the market and ask developers, what would you put down on the ground for South Kingstown to get us to the standards of performance that we're expressing in our request for proposals. Now, one of the things that has come up, and it's a legitimate question, is why don't we just keep the police department and EMS on an 800-megahertz system? They've had an 800-megahertz system for a decade, and while it may have some penetration issues and some coverage issues, coverage issues improve over time with the construction of towers, such as the tower down in Charlestown that just broke ground earlier this week. Penetration issues are tougher. Penetration issues really do require that you have a repeater, and for the police, it really means repeaters in all of the vehicles that they use. So, that's a more difficult problem. But the other piece that's been highlighted and is an important thing for us to focus on is interoperability. Again, 400 radios, unless they're patched, don't talk to 800 radios. So, we've got to figure out how to be able to talk to everybody we work with on the ground. This is a problem, this report is actually a 2000, well, it was a 2000 report, it's a 2003 second edition here, this has been a problem that folks have been working on across the country for decades. Interoperability is the nirvana state that everybody in public safety wants to have. They want everybody to be able to go to their hip radio and talk to anybody in the world they need to talk to. To get there, we need to do an awful lot of buying, we have to build out networks that don't exist in the country, and we're not getting there as quickly as folks would like. What the FCC has suggested in this report is that in the absence of all of the money in the world to get everybody on the same network, there are two options. One is regional harmonization of the radio frequency bands and harmonization of technology. Everybody using the same equipment and the same radio band, everybody's going to be interoperable, everybody's going to be able to talk to each other. The problem with this approach is that it's expensive. The other, it is however, the FCC's preferred solution. The other solution is to do cross-band patching, use those software patches to make the 400, turn the 400 signal into an 800 signal and then send it back out. It's cheaper, it's far cheaper, but it uses more bandwidth, it uses more of the radio frequency. So, the FCC doesn't prefer this solution because it's a hog, it just takes up more bandwidth, so there's less bandwidth available for other uses. We're not particularly concerned about that problem here, we've got plenty of frequency. We're not frequency poor, we're frequency rich in this area, so that's not our problem. Our problem's whether we've got enough money to invest in more expensive 800-megahertz equipment, and we'll come back to that. The other thing, though, to know is that while regional harmonization of the frequencies and regional harmonization of equipment is the preferred solution, it's not without its own problems. We can get regional systems that are oversubscribed, and we've seen evidence that the system here in Rhode Island is oversubscribed. We have coverage problems because any network, even if everybody's on the same bandwidth, if you don't have enough tower, or the same radio frequency, if everybody's not on the same, I'm sorry, if everybody's on the same frequency, that's great, everybody can talk to each other, unless the tower's down, or you don't have enough towers, or there's some characteristic of that frequency, the signal's not strong enough, or the waves really aren't appropriate for the topography or appropriate for the foliage that you've got in your region. There are other things, not just everybody being on the same frequency, that play into whether or not the system works well. So, these are, this is our experience with the difference, and in South Kingstown, we've been running both frequencies, we've been running public safety, both frequencies, for more than a decade. For more than a decade, both fire districts have been on the 400-megahertz radio system, and the police and EMS have been on the 800 system. So, we've got a decade's experience to tell us what works, what doesn't work, what we see as challenges and problems, and this is a list of those. I will point out that we actually are running a three-frequency system here, we do have a VHF system that we use for non-public safety dispatching, the highway crews and the recreation department crews are done on VHF. So, this is just a sense of how big our system is. We're showing here only the municipal side because the fire districts have already got 400-megahertz radios, we're not counting them in this tally. We currently need 224 radios. That's a big number when you consider that radios can cost as much as $8,000 apiece. A 800-megahertz radio is going for anywhere from four, what do you think, what do you got?
$4,800.
$485 to $8,000. 400-megahertz radios are much less expensive. A standard public safety radio is about $1,300, and for non-public safety uses, where you're not worried about it falling off a fire truck and getting rolled over or something like that, if it's the highway crew having a radio, you can buy them for 400 bucks. You cannot buy an 800-megahertz radio that's going to work the way we need it to for 400 bucks. That's a big part of why going to the 400-megahertz for the police and for EMS makes sense. Now, we do have a need for interoperability, there's no doubt about that, we're going to still have to be able to talk to folks who are using the 800-megahertz system up at URI and over at Narragansett in North Kingstown, but we're going to have to deal with that through patches and maybe some redundancy with radio sets, and I'll let the folks who know about that talk about that in a minute. I just want to come back, these are, you know, some of the concerns that Chief Barrington raised are concerns that I think are absolutely valid, and, you know, we've looked at what we can do to address these things. Consider keeping the police and EMS on the 800 frequency, we've done that, and I'll tell you, after really talking to everybody who uses the radios, I'm convinced that the 400-megahertz radio approach is responsible. It's fiscally responsible, and it's responsible in that it provides the signal and the coverage and the penetration in buildings that public safety personnel need. Are there characteristics of an 800-megahertz system that are desirable, that we're not going to have? We're not going to be able to talk to Narragansett or North Kingstown without a patch, but with a patch, we can. Right now, we're using a patch between our 800 and Kingston and Union Fire every time we're on the same scene. We're changing who we're talking to through a patch, we're still going to have a patch. We're not resolving that problem by going to a 400-megahertz system. Chief Barrington has suggested that we go to dual-band radios. Again, I don't see any reason why this isn't something for us to pursue. He's considering putting together a fire grant application and has asked whether we would be interested in having EMS participate in that. The fire grant allows for firefighters and emergency medical personnel equipment for those personnel, but not for the police. But having EMS participate in a fire grant application makes perfectly good sense to me, and if we can save money by getting a federal grant to buy dual-band radios instead of relying on 400-megahertz radios alone, sure, there's something to be said for that, and, you know, I'd happily pursue that approach with the chief. He asserts that we need a governance agreement between the town and the two fire districts to define roles and responsibilities, we're moving toward a more collaborative arrangement than we've ever had with this important infrastructure. He's absolutely right, we have got to get to a governance document. I think that the chief would like to have been at that governance document sooner than we are, but we haven't even gone out and found that we have a product we can buy yet. We don't have anything that we're ready to say, yep, we're all on board and we're good to go. I think, from my perspective, we need to go out to the market, we need to ask the radio vendors what they've got for us, they need to tell us what the price is, and then we need to decide whether or not we really are going to hang together on this stuff. Radio equipment for town departments should be paid out of town or the relevant departments, not the fire districts, I agree with that, that's been a principle that we've articulated since day one. We need better cost estimation, or cost information for the initial capital project and for operating expenses. Again, the chief is absolutely right here, but we're not going to have good capital project costs until we go out and ask the vendors to tell us what it's going to cost. We could spend a lot of time sort of estimating and reestimating and reconsidering, but we're going to do better to just go ask the people who produce these systems, what's it going to cost for our town to get a system that does what we want it to do? So, we've got to get out into the market, and I think at that point, we need, we'll be where we need to be. So, paying for the new system, as a general principle, what we've been operating is under this assumption, our initial estimate from the federal engineering was $3 million to put up the microwave towers and microwave antennas that we need to make the system work. Town share of the project is $2.25 million, that's 75% of the total cost, again, we're a big user. UFD's share, based on it serving 94.7% of the town's total property value, if you look at our total tax roll, 94.7% of those property values, those values are associated with UFD. That includes the Indian Shores Fire District, Indian Lake Shores Fire District. The KFD, on the other hand, provides service to 5.3% of the town's value, property values, and therefore their per rata share there would be $39,750, or $39,750. Cost of the overall project is probably not going to be $3 million. We're working with estimates right now. We're hopeful, and we have some reason to believe, that federal engineering tends to be very conservative in their estimates. So, these are not real numbers, but I think these numbers are probably the high end of where we all can expect to be. Maintaining the system is more difficult, and, last slide, actually, these are the things that go into maintaining the system, you've got to monitor the network, you've got to fix things when they break, you've got to do onsite repair, you have to send things away to be repaired, and you have to fix software. The way that the RFP that we're going to put out there works is that the installer will warranty, give a warranty and maintain the system for three years as part of the cost of installation. After that, there would be a maintenance contract, it's an option, we'll see what the prices are, and the maintenance contract would run for an additional 12 years after that first three-year maintenance. that first three-year maintenance agreement. Typically, we could expect to see a cost of 10 to 12% of initial capital cost each year, so it is not an inexpensive system to maintain, about $135,000 to $225,000 a year is what we're estimating, and we would propose at this point that we do a prorata, department by department, per-radio cost share, essentially building a subscription system. This would not be, at this point, we'd be charging the Department of Public Services for the radios they've got, the UFD for the radios they've got plugged into the system, KFD for the number of radios they've got in the system. And with that...
The FIRE Act grant that was mentioned, which is a 10% local match?
Yes.
Would that be something we'd apply for the whole $3 million and have to match it with $300,000?
So, it is separate. It's an interesting idea, it's not very like, the FIRE grants tend to prefer, the reviewers, I actually was a guy who wrote the FIRE Act when I was working for Senator Dodd, so I love this program, but the reviewers tend to prefer new systems, and this is really a replacement of an existing system. So it would not be as, it would not be as competitive as what Nate is suggesting, he's suggesting new equipment for interoperability across jurisdictions where you've got 400, 800 conflicts. So his proposal is actually stronger than I think we'd be if we made a $3 million request for upgrading of an existing system, particularly a system that is not failing in the kind of catastrophic way other systems are failing.
The $3 million that we're talking about, is that going to include all new radios as well, handheld radios, or just...
The RFP that went out, when you look at the $3 million, that was for structures at every tower site, ballistic doors, heating ventilation, that is the whole nugget, everything across the board. That's what the $3 million is for, so yes, all radios were included in that. Now, as, once the RFP goes out, KFD will pay for their radios, UFD will pay for their radios, town will pay for their radios, so this $3 million is an inflated guesstimate.
Because either way, we're talking about the fact that radios are coming to the end of their useful life, they need to be replaced regardless of what network they're on.
UFD and KFD are right now swapping out 400 radios, we're getting rid of old ones, putting new ones in their place. That's why you saw zeros on that one slide that the manager had. Police, EMS, and highway, and schools, they're all gonna have to get 400 radios. That's why in the RFP, we have three tiers of radios, top, middle, and bottom of the barrel. You don't need a $4,000 radio in a school, you could get away with a $200 or a $60 radio for school purposes on the UHF. And let's just be clear of one thing, we are not getting off the 800 system, we're gonna be working with two side by side. The town's gonna own one, the state's gonna own the other. We're still gonna have 800 radios for interoperability. That's just, that's the way it is, you just, you have to. It is a great system for interoperability, that's what it was meant for, and it works well for that. We just have some coverage issues today.
That's a question I have. Nice question. There's a couple issues that we're trying to solve, so what are we hoping to be, are at, at high frequency power now?
The federal engineer and the coverage maps, this is, you're portable on your hip in a wood frame house, talking into dispatch, we have 95% coverage.
It's a 400?
On 400.
Right now, presently, it's a 400?
No, right, right now, well, right now, we're not right, with one repeater site that we have right now in the town, we're pretty good. With five repeater sites around the town, five-site simulcast system, that's where we're gonna get our 95%.
So we're going to get you that?
Yes.
And the other part, where are we?
I would have to look at a report done by federal corridor engineering a few years ago, we could get that number, I'm guessing at maybe 80, 85%?
Okay, so is this sustainable?
Oh, yes, yeah.
I can give you some examples that we've encountered over the years. We've particularly had difficulties down in the south area of town because of the location of the towers that's currently over at the Charleston Town Hall. REMA and RISCON system is breaking ground, or did break ground, this Monday on a new tower at the Charleston Police Station. That'll help us out in our south area, but many of our areas we're having difficulties with are getting into the buildings primarily along our Route 108 corridor. Our elderly housing that's in that stretch has a lot of difficulties of radio communications for EMS, the high school along that front entrance that was just built, once we get inside to that front vestibule, we lose our radio communications. In parts of the other build, the rest of the building, we do have it, but at that vestibule, that's where we lose it. Curtis Corner Middle School, there's a good part of that building where we don't have communications. I've been, I've purchased $70 UHF radios on the fire band in order for our SROs to communicate with the police department during the school day, and once we get up around URI, there's a number of the URI buildings, once you get into those buildings, there's not communications.
So, what, is this the...
We've tested with the UHF radios in the high school, in the Curtis Corner School, in the, some of the elderly housing that's along that 108 corridor, and the UHF radios have worked.
When you expect that to help, do you tell them?
I believe that, and I'm pretty confident that it will take care of some of the issues in the south area. Currently, we've had significant issues, Perryville, Mattoonik, Green Hill, that area, it should pick up service in that area and be helpful.
So there's a...
To take you a step back, that we started receiving 800 radios back in 2006 to 2010, they were awarded through a grant that the state and the localities received from the federal government, and primarily, the 800 system was given to us for little or no cost. It worked out good in the sense of interoperability, I can communicate with other towns and other departments within the town, but beyond that, I can't talk from my office on the second floor of the police station to our dispatch center on the first floor without a $12,000 booster. The signal just doesn't travel through many different buildings and locations, that's our difficulties.
So I just want to make sure we're clear on this point. The green map that we've got up here shows the coverage that we anticipate would come with a 400-megahertz five-tower system. This is a computer-generated graphic, this is just guessing at what's gonna happen based on the topography information, the geographic information, the signal information, they run a model, so this is a model, it's not actual on-the-ground testing. The tower that's being built in Charlestown will improve coverage for the 800-megahertz system. It's not part of this system, it won't replace the need for Motucket or anything like that. There's an interesting thing about this system that we haven't talked about versus the 800 system, we haven't talked about yet, and that is, we own this, we'd operate this, we'd control this, if we need a repeater, we put a repeater up. With the 800 system, we can't do that, we don't own the system, and the state controls whether or not you add components, and we're not masters of our own destiny in that sense as well. So while it's more expensive to go 800, it's also less flexible from our perspective.
So those green dots look like they're located at places where we have water towers, essentially, at this point, are they co-located?
These are town-owned structures, this is the building block of what we had to work with. Teft Hill is Kingston Water, and Narragansett Station 3 is Suez Water behind the fire station. We have equipment at Narragansett Station 3, now it actually lives in the attic of the fire station, and there's an antenna run up the tower. Teft Hill, in the base of the water tower, we have equipment that lives there, 400. Public Services, we have a backup 400 repeater, receiver. Victoria Lane, we have nothing there now, and Motucket, we have a receiver only. And there's a list, in the needs assessment that federal came, there's a list of multiple locations, this just happened to be the best on the model we did, this is worst-case scenario, this is in-building, talking out on a portable two dispatch. So this is the worst-case scenario. If you wanted to go out in your car and talk in front of it, that would all be green.
So I want to come back and point out to the council that this is not the preferred solution in the best of all worlds. In the best of all worlds, an integrated, harmonized system that has UFD, KFD, South Kingstown Police, South Kingstown EMS, North Kingstown Police, North Kingstown EMS, everybody on the same frequency. That's not where we are in the world today, Charlestown is not on the 800 system, Richmond is not on the 800 system, UFD is not on the 800 system, KFD is not on the 800 system, none of those folks seem to be moving toward an 800-megahertz band focus. We're not gonna get to that Nirvana state anytime soon. We're looking at a radio system that we're gonna have for the next 15 years anyway. It is conceivable that sometime in the future, we're going to have something happen that brings us all closer to one frequency and better harmonized technology. We're suggesting at this point that we shouldn't be holding our breath, that the police shouldn't be spending twice as much on a handheld radio, or three times as much on a handheld radio, just because maybe someday, things are gonna get better with the 800 RISCON system. We shouldn't hold our breath and say to DPS, you gotta deal with the VHF radios you've got, and we're not, we don't have another solution for you. We shouldn't be saying to the schools, hold your breath, or sorry, there's nothing we can do for you, other than give you a $40 radio that seems to work better than anything else in the schools. We've got to start building a system that meets the community's needs, and it isn't the ideal, it's not the first choice, but it is one of the two suggested ways for dealing with interoperability that the FCC has recommended. It's the second, the second most preferred out of two, but it is one of the two.
The Fire Alarm Division went out and acquired 14 UHF, from departments that left their licenses outdated or left for another 800 system or 700 system, or wherever they may have gone. So we acquired the frequencies already for our police, EMS, DPW, extra for UFD, KFD. Along that, you'll have the senior services bus, water, wastewater, schools. Right now, there's only two people on this planet that can pull up to a school and talk to them on the VHF system, I'm one of them. So if there was, God forbid, anything to happen to one of our schools, how do you communicate without having a radio? That's just a fact. Other than that, do you have anything else, Mark, on locations? You could have had the Mattoonik Oysterbar incident, maybe?
I could share with you examples over the past eight years, 10 years, where the police have been involved in dangerous situations and now have radio communications. Off the top of my head, the one that you're probably familiar with is the unfortunate accident that occurred in Mattoonik Oysterbar at the end of the summer. One of our officers was working in detail there, there was an accident involving a pedestrian or a vehicle, and that officer didn't have radio communications, the 800 signal just wasn't reaching his radio. He picked up his cellphone and dialed into dispatch to let them know what the problem was, and as our responding units arrived on the scene, they switched over to UHF, the fire department frequency, wanted to run communications to operation. We've had a couple of incidents where officers have gone to domestic involving guns, and gone into the houses, and no radio communication once they get inside that door. Those are the types of problems that this led to. The 800 creates some good interoperability, I can talk to friends from here on that, but I can't talk from my office to the dispatch center without a booster. UHF tends to work better in the buildings in South Kingstown.
Each location, when it's found out where it's gonna go, there'll be a rack, and in that rack, there'll be five radios. Some may have six or seven, depending on fire department, what we call fire ground channels, you may wanna have those repeated so they could be recorded with a new recording system, but there'll be five channels, you have police, EMS, fire, DPW, and we'll have one that's called townwide. Townwide is gonna be a channel that's open so everybody can talk to everybody if they need it. Police could talk to schools, schools could talk to, you know, a plow truck if they had to. The other thing, too, is the school bus company is on UHF, so the schools will be able to monitor the school bus company. May not be able to talk to them, there'll be permissions there, but they'll be able to monitor them. So it's a townwide system, that's what the RFP went out for, a five-site, townwide simulcast system, so everybody can talk to everybody. Now, there's a few things that you have to ask yourself. Do you wanna make a system so your town can talk to everybody? Or do you wanna make a system so your incoming assets can talk to you? The 400 system's the best way to go, with patching, you can talk to your incoming assets, and we can be patched as outgoing assets also. Little bit of configuration, some software, some radios put here and there, but...
My ignorance, but explain to me what incoming assets are, and...
Mutual aid companies coming into our town?
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks, police cars, rescues, you know, a big incident happens here, we have to call mutual aid people. We don't have enough firefighters to put this fire out, we need help? Yes. There you go, help. Yep.
So I have a question about the coverage, so 95% with this system that we just looked at, is it possible to get to 100?
There's no such thing as 100%, I mean, there's some pretty good radio guys out here in this crowd right now, and if anybody tells you they can give 100%, they're lying to you. It's impossible.
One of the areas that we find difficulties with any radio is behind some of the ledge, like Old Broad Hill off of Minister Road, the end, Holly Ridge Road area. We found that we would have to put towers, regular, most comfortable in order to get that radio reception through that ledge.
And that's not feasible, or cost prohibitive, or what is the logic with not covering?
Feasible, we did explore adding a sixth tower to the system, but again, that would raise the prices more. The system that's proposed is expandable, the town of South Kingstown owns it, the town of South Kingstown can choose to expand it if they wish to. With the 800 system, it's owned by the State of Rhode Island, and we can't work on it without permissions from the State of Rhode Island or REMA. We can't build towers and add to it without their permissions, which may be more difficult than easy to get. Places like Middle Bridge, we have the ledge up above Middle Bridge, we're able to achieve radio signal down there by putting a tower in Narragansett at the fire station and bouncing the signal back down into Middle Bridge, so we're able to bypass that ledge and get signal down in there.
So when the RFP goes out, the vendors will bid on, you know, your specifications, they will have to come up with the 95% number in coverage. So they may have to use the Brown's Corner Water Tower, the Liberty Lane Cell Tower, the, who else, the 10138 Tower, they may have to explore some of these other locations to match that, you know, the Shannon Tower. So the vendor has to meet the specs in the RFP. By a computer program, we came up with that. Anybody can show your computer program and say, this is beautiful, you have 100%... You have 100% coverage." You have to look at what they put in there for adjustables. In-building, are you standing on the street? Are you on a bus eight feet off the ground? You know, there's a lot of keystrokes to make a true coverage map. And this one happened to be made by federal. This was in-building, unhip, portable, talk in to dispatch.
That was one of the reasons that we did hire federal engineering to help us with our RFP process, because none of us at the stable or around the stable fully understand the engineering and the design of each radio system.
Is federal engineering a vendor as well? A provider of the equipment, or are they just engineers?
The RFP that we asked for was specifically an engineer that could not bid on our system. They're there to provide the answers for us and to support us. When the system does go out to bid, they will help us evaluate it with their engineering skills and make sure...
No.
They won't be...
They won't build it. No. And actually, we asked them to do three things. We asked federal engineering to help us figure out what we've got and what we need, which is how you get to the map with five towers. Help us describe that to the world of vendors so that we're asking the right things of the vendor world, and then help us evaluate the proposals when they come in. That's what our consultant's been hired to do. They've accomplished the first and second task, although we haven't published the RFP.
And oversee build-out. They would oversee the construction of the project. Looking up here on some of Chief Barrington's recommendations, Chief Barrington sits on the board committee, the radio committee. Consider keeping the police and EMS on 800 frequency. The RFP is for a UHF townwide system. Why that's there, I'm having a hard time comprehending that. We're putting the police and EMS on the 400 because the 800 is not sufficient. So I'm not going to leave EMS and police officers who are going into the worst of the worst on a system that has, you know, difficulty in coverage right now. That's not acceptable in my eyes. Dual-band radios is a great idea. You just got to pay for them. Those are very expensive radios. We have a tri-band radio. Some of the chiefs for the Union Fire District have one. They're $8,000 apiece. Leave one of those on the back of a fire truck and see how mad somebody will get. So UHF 400 radio, some of the bids are just going out. I know KFD just bought some, UFD just bought some. They are south of $1,000 right now with quantity. So not that it's all cost-driven. It's, the nitty-gritty is, the 800's a great system for interoperability. That's what we're going to use it for. We're going on a townwide, reliable, 95% coverage, in-building, penetration, 400 system. That's been proven it works by the UFD and KFD have been using it for years.
So we're going to stop talking in a minute and let you guys talk, but I just want to let folks know what we anticipate the next steps to be. So the next steps are to get the request for proposals that's been developed by federal engineering out on the street. Get the proposals back in from vendors and to evaluate those, to decide whether one of them can build a system we like, and then to, you know, figure out what that's going to cost. And then we need to, I think, sit down, come up with an actual agreement that says, "Okay, we agree that we want this system and these components, and this is the way we're going to divvy up the cost." The cost structure that we presented has been our working premise, and I think it's a sound approach. It says, "We're the big beneficiaries of the system right now." The town is. We're paying the lion's share of the cost. That 25% that the fire districts are covering is going to be divided proportionately based on the portion of the tax roll that each district pays for. And then radios after the fact, as they come onto the system and out of the system, are paid for and maintenance is paid for. Radios would be paid for as they come in and out of the system by the user, like cellphones' user does, you buy your own cellphone. And then it would be by subscription, radio by radio, divvy it up according to the number of radios you've got across the whole system. That's the working concept. We've got to get that locked in. And I don't think it makes sense for us to do that until we know we've got a system, until we've got a vendor who says, "I can build one for you." We're not there yet.
Where do we stand in the CIP with funding? Where are we?
The town has set aside, I'm sorry, the town hasn't set aside. What we've proposed is that this be an item that would go to bond referendum for November of this year. We'd go to the voters and ask for $2.25 million for this project.
So another question about the bond. The bond's question is separate from the school facilities bond. It will be pieces of a bond, correct?
That's, well, it will be a separate question. It needs to be a separate question. Now, it may be that this bond question could be rolled in with the road infrastructure improve. We've proposed a $3.5 million, I'm sorry, $6.5 million bond for infrastructure improvements, including the radio system, Mattoonik Beach Wall, Old Mountain Field, the boat launch, and a number of other infrastructure items that have been languishing for a long time. Packaged.
Rob, the three-year warranty that we would have, you know, going forward with this project is, that 10% to 12%, I believe is on a slide up there. Are those costs included in the $3 million estimate, or would that be additional costs on top of that?
So they've been included in the estimate that federal has put together. Federal priced it. They, again, they did a rough estimate of what it was, what it would cost us, assuming that they were looking for a three-year warranty from whoever the vendor was, knowing the market, they think that makes sense. And then they assume 10 to 15, or 10 to 12% cost for maintenance in year four through 15, again, because they're experienced in dealing with the industry. That's what they think it's going to cost us.
So it goes out to RFP. We're not necessarily looking at who comes in with the lowest cost. We're looking at who comes in with the best product.
Yes. That federal engineering will sit down, go over each bid that's brought in, weed them down to three or four, look at them, you know. They know what they're doing. This company is pretty large and this isn't their first, you know, system. They'll go through those, pick them apart, sit down with the town or the radio committee and say, "This is what we have. This one can do A. This one can do A and B. This one can only do C." And then you figure out. This is not a price-driven project. This is the best protection for our first responders project.
Now, that having been said, one can imagine that we're going to have a vendor who comes in and says, "I can hit your 95% coverage for $2.2 million total." Another vendor comes in and says, "I can get you to 97% coverage for $2.75." Are we going to go with a high? Maybe. We may, you know, it depends, and we may have some conflicts here. We may have, you know, an agency that says, "$4 million for that system's too rich for my blood." So...
Or we might have a vendor that comes in at a really good price. Everything looks good, but really, are they really going to be able to come through on it?
That's right. What's their experience been? You know, what's their reputation in the community, et cetera, et cetera?
That's why we hired an engineering firm, not a design-build. That's our insurance policy.
So how long is this project scheduled to take till it's completed?
The RFP was planned to be out January 1st of this year, but we've been stalled a little bit.
So upon engaging with a vendor to perform services, how long from that point to which this project would be complete and implemented?
You know how long it would take? Nine months, I believe? Yeah. I saw, there's a timeline in the RFP and the needs assessment. I think it was nine months for the process to go out to break ground.
Rob, just to follow up on my earlier question.
Yes.
Repairs and maintenance, year five through 15, I believe you said, the 10 to 12%. Is that of the total cost of the project? So in other words...
So it's the total cost of the capital improvement. So on $3 million, about 2/3 of that would be actual equipment. It's on that 2/3 that you're taking the 10%.
Okay, so 2/3 of $3 million is $2 million.
Right.
So 10% of $2 million would be $200,000 that we'd have to budget for in the operating budget each year from that year four to 15?
It's what the consortium would have to pay. That's what we'd anticipate the consortium paying each year. And again, what I'm proposing is that we do that per radio, that it become a subscription service. And I'd end up budgeting, depending on the number of radios DPS has got, a portion of that through DPS. The number of radios UFD, we'd expect UFD to contribute for their radios. It would become essentially a subscription service for all users.
Now, Rory, remember, this is based on a $3 million project. Going through the RFP already knowing things we do not need, it is not going to be $3 million. With competitive bidding alone, it's not going to be $3 million. So $3 million's a very scary number, especially when you're trying to figure out maintenance costs on something like that, because you really don't know. You won't know until the RFP comes back what your maintenance cost is going to be. And that's all the check-in boxes that when they're filling out their bid, this is all... You guys can more than welcome to have a copy of this if you want. It's pleasurable reading.
But when it comes to communications, like even in the corporate world, maintenance contracts are generally part of the installation of a phone system, because it's important, because if it goes down for a day or an hour or two, that's, well, in the corporate world, you're costing money, but in this world, you know, that significant, that hour could be the hour that you needed it to work.
Sure.
You know, so...
And this five-site system is also what we call redundant self-healing. If you lose one site, they all don't go down. You know, it's pretty, it's a pretty robust system.
And from what you guys are saying, it's better for us to go with the 400 system versus the 800. We'll still be using 800 in certain instances.
Correct. We're not leaving 800. We're still going to use for what it's intended to do, and that's interoperability. So if there was another, God forbid, Station Nightclub fire when we get called, you'll be able to talk to other people there. But we're building a system for the town of South Kingstown.
And I think the other thing, too, when you think about it from the school perspective, if there's difficulty in those schools in terms of being able to communicate, now it's going to be a lot less expensive per radio, and you can have more radios in the schools if you need them.
Yes. They could, schools can talk to schools, they can talk into schools, they can have, go into townwide and talk to, you know, everybody. That's what, that's why it's a townwide system. Right now, the schools can't talk to, and schools can't even talk to themselves.
Right. And I look at it from a, God forbid, a bad situation happens, how are you going to communicate?
Correct.
After that system is implemented and it's up and running, the town will be responsible for the maintenance of the infrastructure. Townwide.
Everybody's going to be in, putting into the maintenance.
Budget-wise, but as far as...
Controlling it, yes.
Controlling it and overseeing its operation, the communications department will be doing it.
We do that now.
Right. Kingston Fire won't be going out buying repeaters or any other type of hardware to implement any operability issues. We're just going to be concerned with buying radios that conform to the system and then paying a subscription for each unit.
Correct. If Kingston wanted to put a fire ground repeater in at a certain location with permission of the committee, they would be able to do that. So it's expandable to everybody's needs. And then if there's an issue that goes down, my guys, we're on 24/7/365. We get called now on those radio issues. So realistically, we are covering that now. We call in to vendors to do fixes.
My concern is, I just want to make it clear that it's, one domain is maintaining it and operating it and knows what's going on with it instead of everybody, maybe somebody else trying to say something in there.
No. Too many cooks in the kitchen is not going to work.
Exactly.
Yep. No, there'll be, it's an informational conduit. You have an issue with the radio, the right people call the vendors in to fix it. We don't need other people back-dooring, calling, emailing. That's not going to happen.
So one other quick question. Because there's different departments, different entities technically, if I'm UFD and I want a radio, is there going to be a specific vendor you're going to go to because...
The beautiful thing about the 400 system is you can buy from any vendor you want.
So the reason why I ask that question is if you're buying from any vendor you want, how do you then get the maintenance agreement?
That's on you.
Okay, separately.
Your radio subscriber, that's going to be on, you take care of your radios, town takes care of their radios, KFD takes care of their radios. The maintenance is going to be on the infrastructure that makes the system work.
All right, so a couple of things. One, maintenance on the infrastructure. If a, say, UFD doesn't want maintenance on their radios, they don't have to, but they're going to be responsible for...
It's up to them.
Replacing them as they come along.
The town isn't buying UFD radios. Kingston's not buying town radios. It's three entities putting this thing together.
But I'd have to suspect that you'd get better pricing if everyone joined forces, correct? And everyone bought from the same vendor and purchased the same maintenance?
We have radio specs that we go by first responder grade. We have, in the RFP, there are three tiers of radios. First responder grade, medium grade, and, you know, I'm going to call it school grade. Not that it's any lesser product, it's just a cheaper radio. Doesn't have all the bells and whistles. The tier one, waterproof, drop-proof, dust-proof, first responder grade equipment, military specs.
Right, but buying from the same vendor, and the more units you buy from anyone in any business, the better price you get. So I would think it would behoove the entities to join forces, not only with purchasing of the radios, but also those maintenance agreements if they so choose.
Right, but...
To get a better pricing with...
We're moving from three very separate entities on this component of public safety to a consortium. We don't want to have a situation where either fire district, or for that matter, the public works department or the schools feel that they're being dictated to from a central office. The form that we're looking to build here is a collaborative, shared interest group. If over time, we find that our needs are in sync, you know, that we're all going to need radios at about the same time, I would certainly expect that we'd be getting together and figuring out how to find the best product together. But it's not, we're not contemplating a system where town communications is dictating, "You can only buy from this list of vendors and you can only buy up to..." That's not, that's not what we anticipate at this point. In fact, it's not what we anticipate ever, ever. I mean, it's just not, it's not a, it's not a good design. Everybody's needs are different, even just on things like the durability. The schools, you know, you drop it off your hip, it falls on the ground, it's not a big deal. The durability of a fire-ground radio has to be, you know, serious. It's a rugged piece of equipment. It has to be a rugged piece of equipment. One vendor may or may not have that, you know, range of products, and we can't, we can't, shouldn't be trying to make sure that everybody's buying from one.
So what do you need from the council? Just a blessing or...
So we will be coming to the council at the next council meeting with two referendum questions that the council is going to need to deliberate. One of them will be the public infrastructure bond question. Should we go to the state legislature and ask for permission to put a bond question on the ballot for public infrastructure, including this project? And the other, which we know the school committee has expressed an interest in, is the school bond going to a ballot referendum on November 3rd, I guess it is this year.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there a comment?
So there is a possibility. I think that that's exactly what you're going to see at your next council meeting. We have been looking into whether or not there is a way for us to borrow without going to bond, whether there's a commercial... to bond, whether there's a commercial bank that's going to give us favorable terms, which would allow us to go out with an RFP sooner. I think that we can go out with an RFP at this point without anything other than the assertion that this is subject to availability of funds. It would have been nice to actually have money or a credit card to be able to work with. We haven't found a ba, a bank, a commercial lender that's going to give us favorable terms. We don't like the terms. We're going to do well on a bond, we think.
What are, bonds are running pretty low right now, right?
Bonds are running very low right now. We're seeing similarly situated communities issuing municipal bonds for under 3% interest.
I think I'm done, but Kingston Board and Junior Fire District here, I think they should have...
I just want to say that maybe the radio system has a problem, I think, and we just are a little concerned. One of the challenges is, we want to do it all, we do this system, you know, at least a 15 years or something. We want to make sure that we can break down this. The district has a higher company, we need to deal with that, or recall, we do whatever, we need to do that. So we know now, it's been a very interesting, you know, a lot of time, lots of time, you know, every time we run, I guess, frustrated, it's even harder to do this, you know, with the radio, you know, so, you know, we need to call each other, so, so, first, I mean, we're, maybe I go through, um, great, um, I know, I know, kind of, but, but, I'm not safe, you know, some other costs, I mean, you know, we're all, you know, you're...
You know, one of our concerns was, you know, what was our proportion based on a 25%? Because we're like the city of Central Falls, one square mile, with a budget, much money. But what I, I just want to, I like the, I think that that's something that's workable with your breakdown, your response to the proportions and how it's split up. I think we're all going to work together. You know, we can't forget that we're one community here and we all work together, and we all know one another very well. We're one team. And even though we may have three different districts, we're one team. And I just want to, I know I've had a couple of conversations with Lance and a couple of conversations ongoing with the Board of Wardens, UFD representatives, and I just want to make sure that the council knows how hard Lance really worked on this. And especially, I think the Kingston Fire District really put him through, you know, made him work for his, his keep. So I, I just want to say how much I appreciate his diligence and having a background in, in public safety for many years. I'm very familiar with how that works, and this is something that, that really needs to be, needs to be addressed. The town's getting bigger and, you know, not to be a, I don't have a crystal ball, but the time's going to come when something's going to happen. And it's always great to be ahead of the curve. And that's the way, you know, Chief Jaber operated, along association. So I, I know that's how it should go down, and with the council support that it will have, and I appreciate the council's support of this as well, and all the work that the town manager and everyone else has done. I just want to, you know, and Lance, I just want to make sure people realize how much we're these numbers. It is, but...
A couple of quick questions for Lance, and first one, the 14 frequencies that you have, does that include the current fire ground or fire dispatch frequencies, or is that...
These are additional, too.
Okay.
Or our...
Okay. So we would, we would have multiple frequencies to run multiple incidents in the town, within the town. Question for Captain Healy, do we have the dispatch capabilities to run multiple incidents like that? Do we have, if we had a fire in the north end, a fire in the south end, EMS doing their thing, and your normal police operations, would you have enough dispatchers, enough personnel to be able to monitor all those radios?
We currently do now. We have two dispatches in there at a time. They currently can handle multiple situations, and with the new infrastructure of a new system, we anticipate that there should be improvements that make it easier with the, the better technology.
And second, any current infrastructure that we have, repeaters, microwave links, would that be assumed by the new vendor or the vendor who is going to provide this service? Or...
Does that start out to be any existing parts of infrastructure that are compatible?
Excellent.
Depending on age, you know, it's quite a big list of bits.
All right, thank you.
And just so you know, a few Fridays ago, we had that windstorm.
Yes.
Two hundred, 150 calls in an hour, and 200 calls in an hour, and...
Excellent, okay.
And, uh, we had a...
Oh.
Uh, so, 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 uh, so,